Our first section on the budget meeting, which is a joint meeting with the library board. I would like to welcome the library board to this meeting. It's always a pleasure to have you here. So I'll turn this over to Jenny Nelson, who is now the president of the library board, and very well suited to do that.
Thank you. I think we could call the library board meeting to order. If we could have a role call for the board?
I'll do this better, I promise.
Bustler?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Gottlin?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Santuli Shuda?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
And Steta?
Here.
Okay. You can go right ahead with that, if you want to do that, it's fine.
The next item is the signing of the MOU by the library board and the village board.
So I have two originals, so if you want to sign them first, and I'll give them to Steve.
I will. Certainly.
Did you want to make any comments here, Jennifer?
I just wanted to say thank you to the library board and village board members who served on the committee to do the planning for that agreement. They put a lot of time and thought into that, and I'm glad to have it ready for us to move forward with the project. So thank you to everybody involved.
And I would echo those comments, and also thank you for your leadership in building consensus on it. So it worked out really well.
Simon, have you signed these, and I can give one to Jennifer?
Very excited. Thank you guys very much.
Do you want the original, or should I give it to you? This is the original. That'd be kind of nice for both bodies to have the original.
Okay, so our next item is library budget, discussion of possible action approval by the village board. Item A, Fund 202, the special fund, which in our binders, this page is 27, 28, and 29. And there's $125,000 budget for architecture fees for the new building. Any discussion or questions here by either body?
I think these budgets are pretty similar to what we saw less... Oh, no, I'm sorry, back in the August, right? Was that the joint meeting, in August?
Yeah, I don't believe there are any changes to the 202 accounts at all. But if anybody has any questions or wants me to work through them, I'm happy to do that.
Do you want separate motions on each item, Mike?
Please.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Fund 202 special fund.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, anything for Jennifer from the village board or library board? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you. Quote on B, Fund 203, created in 2017, which is the operating and billing budget. This page is 30, 31, and 32 in our binder. In 2019, the library board and library director will be reevaluating the step plan for adding staffing, subscriptions, audiovisual, and books in future budgets. So we would need a motion on that item.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, Jennifer, go ahead.
I will note that there are some very minor changes to this since you last saw it. There's actually a decrease in the percent change over the last year. There were some adjustments made due to the health insurance costs that the village staff now has. They can put in the actual numbers. So now the percent change to the property tax levy would be 2.66%, which is a decrease over what it had been previously. So that tax line item has decreased. There is one minor increase to the pension line on page 31. It's the third item from the top. There is an employee that has become eligible for WRS that hadn't previously been budgeted for that. So that's been added in. There's a minor correction of about $1,200 for that account. But it's offset by a decrease to health insurance because those numbers are known. That account went down about, I think, $5,000 or $6,000. So it's at $63,000. Previously, that number was around $69,000. So that's been a decrease over the last time we looked at that line item. I believe those are the only changes to this since last time we met.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from either group? Yeah, go ahead.
What's crime insurance?
That is something that the village coordinates for all departments, and I believe that's to protect the village against any theft or...
Correct. Yep, somebody still is an embezzlement or something like that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have the motion second for Fund 203 in the library budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. And then item C, Fund 804, the Whackman Trust Fund.
And I will just preface this saying that I'm still learning about this account. It's handled a little differently in that it's the only account that the library holds in their own bank account. So I'll be reviewing that over the course of the next year and see if that continues to make sense or if there's a better way to handle that in terms of accounting. But it was a trust that was given to the library. It's a private donation, so it's not coming from the taxpayers.
Any questions or comments from anyone? So we have... Do we get a motion on that?
No.
No, so we need a motion on Fund 804?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. So Jenny, it's back to you for item 10.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the library board?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
I'm very efficient.
Yeah, stick around. We're going that way the whole night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, nice job.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, so item 11 is 2019 budget overview and proposed tax levy. There's a tab, the overview tab in our binder for that. And we'll turn that over to Restor Grace and Lisa.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Lisa. Hey Jenny? Are you here for something on the agenda?
I have another meeting after your sit down.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure. The PD's next week, so I want to make sure.
There's a lot of Jennies back there.
Sorry, Bob, I should have said... I should have said lieutenant, excuse me.
They all popped up.
Guys, I want to make sure you're not waiting for something, so, okay.
Engaged citizen.
Pardon?
She's an engaged citizen, right?
Yes. It's good to see you, thank you for coming. Are you ready, Lisa?
Yep.
Okay. So the... In your budget book is the overview. It's in the overview tab. I'm sure everybody gets to that. And I will say at the beginning, if the board members think this is a lot nicer looking, you can thank Candy. She put color to it, yeah, and put tables on it. I think it's a lot easier to read this year, so... She did a very nice job.
Thanks, Candy.
So as the first slide indicates, we're happy to present the budget. The department heads, as usual, did a very nice job submitting well-thought-out budgets. And Lisa had really good meetings with them in August and September. And the upcoming meetings are next week, Monday, Wednesday, and then we're shooting for the public hearing on November 12, which is the week before Thanksgiving this year, so... On page three, or slide three, at this point, the average increase for a house went down $5 to $105 or $110. And the main reason for that is we were surprised that we got our transportation aid number already last week, which is, for us, is early. And I will tell you that I belong to the Wisconsin City Management Association, and there's a lot of communities that are seeing major decreases in their road aid. So I think it's because we took over Jefferson Street. We've done some road construction, which is why our number's going up. I mean, there are some communities that lost $60,000, $70,000. And of course, administrators are asking that, the state's saying that there's more money available. So it's just all part of the formula. We've got lucky two years in a row so far, so... And we'll talk about that. But that's the main reason. We just basically took that and put that into the budget and reduced the levy. And so at this point, I think the thing, if you want to look at this, is that for every $10,000 your assessed value went up, it's at this point, increase in your... For every $10,000 your assessed value went up, the levy is going up about $10,000... $80. Let me sort it over again. For every $10,000 of your assessed value increasing from last year to this year, it's increasing about $80, sorry. And sort of the second example sort of shows that. The next sheet is the more of the detailed levy sheet, which shows $105, which also shows that... So what's different this year is that our tax rate is actually going up a little bit than compared to the last year, when it was actually decreasing. And these same levy adjustments were on the other slide. And that is kind of the same sheet you saw last week with the levy adjustments, as well as the net new construction.
Mike, real quick?
Yeah.
And if I'm knocking you out of your rhythm, please let me know.
No, no, please ask questions.
I'm trying to find why the total public charge for service has swung as great as it has in the detail, and I'm just not coming up with it quick, and I'm having a hard time getting past that mentally.
Total public charge.
What page are you on?
Page three.
Of the budget?
I'm in the overview section, Jeff.
We're in the...
Okay, we haven't got there yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Yeah, please ask questions as I'm going along here. As we... We'll try to... We're going to obviously discuss the reasons behind the tax increase and other budget information in the following slides, but also during the upcoming meetings. And we are still waiting on some numbers that we're going to get in. The recycling grant from the state, and as well as we have to go through the open enrollment period for health insurance. And as indicated, the tax rate is increasing at this point from $5.35 to $5.46 per thousand. And then the next page is a table that Candy prepared, which shows revenues... Show revenue basically is flat. That hasn't gone up in many, many years. The expenditure restraint that we are able to receive went down a little bit. And this is where, which helped us, is that road aid went up $16,000, which is a... That was a nice surprise we got. Recycling grant, we're still waiting on. And then, as we talked about, at the end of September, Rachel continues to get additional funding from Dane County, which has helped the budget tremendously.
Can you explain what that expenditure restraint thing is?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So it's... It used to be pretty... It used to be pretty simple. You have your general fund, and there's a formula that you can't go over a certain amount. It includes cost of living or consumer price index. And a couple of years ago, they made it somewhat complicated. You have to deal with levies going into other funds. But it's an incentive that the state's had in place for a long time to try to get you to keep your expenditures down under a certain level. And if you do, you get something beyond state share revenue. The thing that's a little tricky is that if everyone qualifies for it... That's why one year we got $46,000 as a payment from the state, the next year we got $32,000. It's a... You get these wild swings in what you get because of a number of communities that either qualify or don't qualify. But it's an incentive by the state to have you keep your expenditures down.
So counterintuitive.
And so what happens is that, as we mentioned here, is that every three to four years, we don't qualify. And then we raise our levy up, and then we qualify for three or four years. And like when you add staff, it's very hard to qualify.
It's a percentage increase of the operating budget, and we've kind of estimated it at about 3.8%. So if we could stay under the 3.8%, we would qualify in 2020 for expenditure restraint. But because of adding the new staff and everything, it's impossible to do.
We're like 100 and...
$19,000 over what we were allowed. It's just the operating budget that they're...
Well, it's...
Well, no, it's not anymore.
It used to be that, and then now they count the levies that are going into other funds. It's gotten really complicated, and I don't know why they did that, but that's the DR's decision. And the league really questioned, they had meetings, the league of Wisconsin staff had meetings with them and asked questions like, "Why are you changing this?" And they said, "That's how we're interpreting the law." So it's a little more... It's a little harder to figure out what to do with it. But I'm confident we'll get back and we'll start qualifying again once we get through this year.
Sure.
As I mentioned, we're still waiting on the recycling grant. And we did increase our investment income quite a bit because it's trending that way, but I think we'll continue to watch that before we adopt the budget to make sure our $60,000 amount is the correct amount to have in the 19 budget.
Mike, I might be getting ahead of you here.
That's okay.
But on the senior center funding?
Mm-hmm.
It went up quite significantly. Is there a couple of reasons for that? Or are there a couple of reasons, I should say?
Well, they keep... I think the village has... Is Rachel here? Oh my gosh, thank you, Rachel, for saying... Want to answer that, please?
Thank you for volunteering to answer the question, Rachel.
I thought you just came for dinner. Oh, that was Jeff, you're right, sorry.
There's a couple of reasons why the senior center funding went up this year. Or will go up next year, I should say.
I mean, it's great, it's a great thing.
Yes. One reason is because of that boundary change, where we're going to be providing services to the eastern portion of Rutland that we hadn't been before. So the county has some formulas that they apply to determine funding. And when you're responsible for a rural area, they look at how many seniors there are there. They give... There's kind of some rural bumps for not having public transportation available to them. So you... It's going to take more effort on the part of the center. So that's one reason. Another reason is we just continue to serve more people, which, when you put that into the formula, you're going to get more dollars out of the human services budget for Dane County because you're serving more people in the community, so...
Very good.
Those are the basic reasons.
How is your staff going to deal with that okay?
It's going to be a transition year, and we'll see how much more staff hours we might have to add in the future. But for next year, we feel pretty confident that we can maintain the level of services that we've been providing with the same number of staff hours.
Are there any specific areas that it's going to increase?
Case management.
Case management?
Will probably be the area that sees, feels it the most. Our nutrition might, because they'll be providing more meals to more people. Those will be my two.
Thanks for the info.
Hey, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
On the next page, the fire EMS budget is going up somewhat, so...
Hey, Mike, real quick, I just want to congratulate you and Lisa both for the work you did on the banking issue.
Oh, yep.
It's a lot of work to change banks. And a lot of people will just stay away from it altogether because of how much work it is. But the fact that you were willing to embrace it, and you were able to return this amount of income to the village because of it is huge, and I just really appreciate it. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Jeff, for saying that.
Where is that?
Pardon?
Where's the amount?
Oh, on the bottom.
It was on the bottom of the previous page about the investment income.
Oh, yeah, okay. In the big print?
Yes.
Print's too big.
Sorry. Candy's making it too easy to read, that's the problem. I'm confusing you guys, yeah. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm back on the expenditure restraint thing because I noticed that we actually have a value in for 2019, so...
It's always... It's a... So 18, the 18 budget, you qualify, you get the payment in 19.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, so then we don't qualify in 19, we won't not get a payment in 2020. I know, it's a little...
Got it, okay, that makes sense because I thought if we don't qualify, why do we have a value in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm with you.
If you understand it, you're probably not looking at it right.
I just wanted to mention that, you know, the village continues to be the largest partner in the fire EMS district. We're at 64% now. We continue to grow because of our assessed value and things like that, so... I think we talked about this in the past. The line energy now is charging us more, and that's a pretty significant increase.
Mike, can I add?
Sure.
Any idea why so much?
They found that they were not charging us correctly for the use of their poles.
Some calculation was wrong?
Yeah, that... Jeff wrote a...
The number of poles was off.
Yeah, Jeff wrote a memo about this maybe four or five months ago. And he looked at it, and he felt that it was... It was... They were correct, yep. The police department, you know, when... This is a good lead into what Amanda was talking about. When we passed the... We approved the police department union contract. You know, Lisa raised the point that at some point during the contract, it was probably going to be hard to qualify for expenditure restraint payment. And so here we are. It's... You know, it was our goal, all the board and the chief and Jenny, the lieutenant, to get the officers, you know, to the mid-range, you know, as compared to other communities. But that is costing us some money. And for example, the second year of implementing the police officer's contract, and having now the additional officer we added in 18 hitting the budget, it's like a $73,000 increase. So right there, it's a pretty significant increase, is why we're not qualifying for expenditure restraint. I'm not blaming that on that, but it is a reflection of that. It was a good contract for the police officers.
Well, and in fairness, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're really only talking about bringing the police officers to...
The mid-range.
Right.
Yep. Which is a comparable.
Which is a fair wage that's going to keep our trained officers in our village and not looking to other communities.
I have no regret doing it, but it is one of the reasons why we're not going to qualify, yep. We talked about this before. The police secretary position is increasing some hours there because the police department's very busy. And our legal costs continue to... You know, we just use mat a lot, and our legal costs are going up. Prosecution is going up. They take a lot of things to trial, and so we're paying for that.
Can you give us an example of what kind of prosecution issues?
They're taking OWI's to trial versus settling with them, yeah.
Right.
And I want to correct something, and I actually confused Alex about this, about this is the next item here. We are not actually adding a staff person to the front office. We are basically backfilling a position that's been vacant for quite some time. And we actually, the staff, we, in the 18 budget to lower, help lower the levy, we actually were going to start that vacant position in mid-year. And so this is not a brand-new position. This is just backfilling a vacant position that's been vacant for a year and a half, so... So it does... I wasn't clear when I was doing that levy worksheet last week with you, so... We continue the levy for the sick leave conversion fund, and you'll see when we talk about, there's very few employees left that are eligible for that. It was employees... You had to be here before 2006 to be eligible for that. And there's some eligible requirements that you have to meet to be... To receive the payment.
That's a thing post-retirement.
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Where your sick leave is converted to cash?
Up to a year.
Up to a year.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's... It depends, Jerry, it's complicated now. We changed it a couple of years ago, so...
I'd be disappointed if it wasn't.
Yeah. We're hiring the full-time staff planner, and you know, I went back and looked at it. I think it's still hitting the levy about $20,000 to $24,000. I still think it's the right thing to do. We're at the point, Mike Slavney thinks we're big enough or busy enough to be hiring a planner. And Jeff, Raul, and I have many, many things for this new planner to do whenever they arrive in 19. We continue to provide a cash payment of $10,000 to the youth center, the same as in 2018. Debt service is increasing, and the impact fees... And impact fees are no longer being collected to cover new debt. What I mean is the debt that we were paying off, for example, for the public works building and police buildings, ended in September of this year. And so we can't be collecting impact fees for that debt anymore. And now we've added new debt, which we don't have impact fees, so we're having to use levy if that makes sense. That's why the levy for debt service is increasing.
What about the library? Are we still collecting fees on that?
Yep, we are.
And then when the new library gets...
So next Monday, we're going to talk about, with the park board, impact fees for the park. And we're going to, you know, if the board agrees to do that, then we're going to direct the village attorney to do the needs assessment for the increase in the current library impact fee and the park fees. And it would go from... The library would go from $422 to $897.
Okay, what would the impact fees for a park be used for?
Park improvements.
Improvements.
Or doing... Purchasing a new parkland.
But not maintenance?
Cannot use it for maintenance, no.
Okay.
Then this is another thing that hit the levy, is that this is the first debt payment. You know, we purchased the motel property and at the beginning of this year, and the debt is hitting the levy for the first time, which is $46,000.
Almost $47,000.
Almost $47,000. Now, when we sell the property, and we will at some point, it's a state trust fund loan, so we'll take that money we make from selling it and pay off, hopefully just pay off the loan, and then it's gone, so... We added a limited term employee for maintaining the cemetery rather than contracting with a landscaping company, so that's adding a little bit to the budget. The full... Excuse me, the full impact of the wage market adjustment will be hitting in 19. And right now, the budget currently includes a cost of living adjustment of 2.5. And then the next page, there's a listing of the street projects that you'll talk to Jeff about next week. Our main project next week... I'm sorry, next year is to do the intersection of Park Street and Janesville for the hotel. The hotel will be open, and we need to enhance that intersection so people can actually get out of there safely. So we'll be working on that. Like I said, Jeff will talk about that next week with you. And this is the list of the equipment, the main equipment that we'd be buying out of the capital equipment fund for 14. And again, Jeff and the chief can... Well, actually, the main thing the police department is buying are the two squads, which you have already approved to purchase. So it's probably more of a discussion with Jeff about his equipment next week.
Mike, can I ask you a question back to the Park Street and Janesville Street project?
Yeah, yep.
I see the note saying that the engineering for the Park Street, Janesville Street project is being funded by 2016 borrowing. So we borrowed that in 2016, and it's just been sitting in account.
So we have three years to use that money, so we're going to use it next year. And we thought we were going to get to it sooner. I... One of the things that Lisa and I have been working with Jeff, Jeff Raul, on is to finish the capital improvement plan. It's been a real struggle because we have so many projects to do. We're trying to stay under $10 million some of the years, but we don't want to cross over a $10 million mark. And then just being sensitive to Jeff's time about how many street projects you can actually coordinate. So, you know, we borrowed that money, and I think Jeff thought he was going to be able to get to that sooner than he is. And then, actually, it took a little bit longer than we anticipated to get the hotel project going as well. So when you see the CIP, you'll see that, you know, in 19, we're doing the intersection down there. And I have topped my head, I forgot if... We're basically going to do three main street projects. We're going to do... Then we're going to do the complete reconstruction of Park Street in front of the hotel. We're going to do two county projects from Spring Street down to BP area. And then we'll take it over from the county, and then from Grove Street up to McDonald's. And so we're going to try doing that over the next five years.
So are there any of those, either of those last two projects in the county that we're taking over? Are either of those in 19?
No.
20?
I don't... I think we're doing... I think we're doing Park Street so that it's... So the street in front of the hotel is in good shape before we do the county projects.
Okay.
And then we have to... I mean, we have to be careful because the state's doing the 14 project, and we can't have Main Street blocked off when the state's doing 14. and we can't have, uh, Main Street, uh, blocked off when the state's doing fourteen, so. And again, Jeff will talk about this one when he's here, but I think we actually have the CIP in pretty good shape. We actually just sent it to our, to Elders, uh, our financial advisor last week. And they're going to now update it, their financial review, that we'll share that with the board, hopefully, maybe at the end of October, beginning of November sometime.
Has the county been notified?
Not yet.
Okay.
But we will.
Yeah, give them as much notice as possible.
Yeah, okay. I didn't, I didn't, I looked at their capital improvement plan. I didn't see that in their, in their plan for next year.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, that's a good idea. I know, I know they're focused on, uh, uh, doing fish hatchery with, with City of Pittsburgh next year.
Yeah.
But you're right, as a courtesy, we should reach out to them. I'll, I'll have Jeff do that.
Just keep the communication on.
Yeah, I'll do that.
I don't, I'm sure you're going to be very popular, but.
Yeah. Well, you know, we, as part of the MOU, we signed with them. Both parties have to agree to do it-
Yep.
-when we were ready and we're, we're just not ready to do it, so.
No problem.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question too.
Yep.
Um, uh, since the South Perry Parkway, Janesville thing went through, I know the county is looking at, they're going to have to do a study of that intersection. Does that impact our budget at all or do all those costs fall on the county? If they put in a light or they-
They, they could try, they could try cost-sharing that with us. It depends, you know, they may wait until we actually do the project together with, with them.
Do we need to like budget anything for that though? Like to, to look at that as something that probably will happen in twenty-nineteen?
Um, well, I don't-
For safety reasons?
I, I don't think it's going to happen in twenty-nineteen unless, unless you, you, have you heard something that, that's going to-
I, I just keep hearing from people how dangerous that intersection is. It, it's really bad. And unless we do something, I mean, like somebody needs to get on the county and be like, you guys got to do something.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't want to get too off-topic, but that is definitely on my radar.
I will, I'll, I'll, when Jeff is here, we can talk to him, Bob. Because we haven't heard any, any, anything with the county doing any study of it next, next year at all.
Because it would have to be them, right? That's not us. There's nothing-
It's still county road. Yep.
But, like, so if-
And they're going, and they're going to look, and not, not to be difficult, they're going to look at, they're going to look at accidents. And they're going to look to see turning movements and things like that, so, um, they're, they're just not going to put signals up without doing a, a study most likely.
Do they do near misses count? Because there's been a lot.
Well, again, that's turning movements and, and like, you know, we, we had them, they put lights up on Braun Road, for example, when, when the business park opened up, because we knew that was going to be hard to get trucks out of there. Uh, I'm not saying we're not going to do that some point, but at this point, it wasn't on the planning horizon to do anything next year with the intersection.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not an easy sell with the county. I mean, they do their traffic counts, which are busy in the morning and afternoon at rush hour. They're real quiet in between that, so oftentimes it counts at a certain time or high, but throughout the day they're not. And they take the average, I think.
Yep.
And that's what's come up, like with the stoplight at Wolf Street in Janesville. Uh, you know, that was dicey getting to the middle school, you know, getting back onto Janesville at that, uh, before that light went out. But they, they hung around a long time without doing it.
Yeah.
It's going to be a challenge.
Do they respond to petitions? Because I got people lined up, ready to. I don't know.
Well, let me, let me, I think, let me have Jeff reach out to the county, tell them about the two projects, where it, where they are right now. And then I'll have them talk to about the intersection as well.
Okay.
Since we're talking about county and street improvements, um, do you know where we're at on the sidewalk on Wolf Road or MF? Especially now with that development going in?
I, I, I know, I don't, I know they're, they're pouring the one on Perry Parkway today.
I saw that.
You saw that? I can ask Jeff that as well.
Do we know when the, the town portion of that sidewalk is going to happen?
Uh, possibly tomorrow or-
Oh.
Yeah, it, it's, it's going to be probably done this week.
Is it simultaneous?
Pretty close.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Jeff just told me about that today. Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe Jeff should have stayed.
Yeah, where is Jeff? He ate our pizza and then left.
Well, he had, he had dinner and I told him to go home, so.
This is what you get for eating and running, right?
We should give him some jobs. Give him some assignments.
Yeah, he has nothing else to do, yeah.
He didn't hesitate to leave either.
Are there any, any questions on the, on, on the equipment page ten? Again, you know, Jeff will go through this with you when, when he's here. We, we are going to try to get, uh, better audience chairs for the boardroom.
Yay.
Looking at Jenny.
Maybe that will encourage people to actually come.
I know, I know.
A comfortable chair.
What about fancy chairs for staff?
We, we may do that too. Yeah, we may do that too.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we should do that.
Okay.
Definitely.
Well, you, these are the ones that used to, the board used to sit on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I've used some of these in my office over the years. They, they're getting worn down.
We should do new ones for staff.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We will do that. Um, and then on page eleven, we were talking about the expenditure restraint and, uh, as I mentioned, you know, we, we qual, we'll, we sometimes will not qualify this every three to four years, so we hope that when we do the twenty-twenty budget, we'll get a payment in twenty-twenty-one. That's, that would certainly be our goal. Um, we're going to continue to evaluate the flooding issues on the Rotary Bike Trail, which is only, have only gotten worse. I will tell you, so was it last week, Monday, when Jeff, uh, was showing us the, uh, the, the survey he did? And he was showing if, if the kettle was full, where the water would release. The very next night, I rode all throughout my son and that's where the water, the water was actually, yep, it was, it was. So I think the kettle is technically full. It was, you know, when you come over that hill, Steve?
Yeah.
It was coming over there. And then it was by near Jenkins', uh, property, it was across the path.
Oh, my gosh.
And the, and the cornfield in, on DLC's property was just saturated.
Yeah.
So, like, the kettle's full. But he was right. I had to tell him that the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, continue to plan for JCPark West renovations. Next week, Monday, the joint meeting with the park board. Amanda will bring forward the, uh, the sponsoring policy. I think we're ready to, to, to go with it and start doing some fundraising with, with Judy and Lisa's help. And then, as I always say, and I do these, um, we continue the practice, which we started way back in two thousand and four, of not using, um, fund balance. And what I mean by this for new, new board members, we try not to take fund balance to, and use it in the general fund for operations, because when we go out to, uh, to borrow Moody's, when they look at us and they rate us, they, they don't, that makes them very nervous. And so we have a, a, a good rating and I think that's one of the reasons why, so we try not to do that.
So it'd be like if you used your savings account every month to pay your bills?
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody knows it's sooner or later, your savings account's going to run out.
You're in trouble.
You've got a spending problem.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we've been, it's been a long time since we, we stopped. When I first got here, we were doing that. And it took, it took like three or four budgets to stop doing that and we finally stopped it. And I think that helped us get rerated, um, or re, you know, I think it happened back in oh six, just when Steve became village president, we got that higher rating, so.
That was, Jerry Lufke played a big part in it.
Yeah, yeah. We, I remember, we thanked Jerry. We went up there and gave that to him, yeah.
Well, Steve probably taught the guys from Moody's.
Yeah.
You know?
You could just throw it at him.
I wouldn't want to hit Amanda.
I'm going to slide towards.
So are there any que-
You all slide down.
Are there any questions on the-
Are we still within the twenty to twenty-five percent, uh?
It's twenty-five to thirty, isn't it?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
At the end of seventeen, we were at what, twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
Yep. So Jerry's, Jerry's asking, so when, when, and the audit's done, we always try to stay within, well, we have a resolution we passed between twenty-five and thirty percent of, of, of our fund balance. And, and we've been, we've been twenty-seven, twenty percent. We're still in good shape.
Right.
That's another, that's another thing to look at. Are you meeting your, your policy?
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's twenty-five to thirty percent of our expenditures, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
General operating.
And general operating, yeah.
Okay.
So, I am done.
Okay, so, um, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank staff for the budget you bring forward. Uh, I've always been pleased in the sixteen years I've done this with the, uh, the work of staff and bringing budgets forward that are well-done. Um, I know, as, as I look through, uh, what this budget involves, there's a lot of good things happening in this village. Uh, we're growing, we're growing well. I think we get good leadership from our staff. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Steve.
And I think the board works well with staff and making this happen, so it's a, it's a good, a good situation.
I think Lisa made a comment to me when I was sitting in her, in her office for many hours, this, she's always excited about that. I, I think it just shows that when we, when we make decisions, they do come and they either, they impact the budget, you know? And again, that's why I'm using, again, not picking on the police contract, but when we made that contract, we knew it was going to hit the budget. And so I'm glad the board is, you know, recognizes that and supports that as we present the budget. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
My only comment is I really appreciate, um, Mike's overviews.
Oh.
But the budget's a complicated thing. It's tough to understand and ninety percent of it is pretty straightforward. You do a really nice job of pulling that ten percent out and, and just bringing it right to the surface.
Thank you.
Which helps me. And I'm sure Lisa contributes as well.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Maybe a little.
Yeah, right.
Okay, anything else on item eleven A? Okay, we'll go to, uh, I'm sorry, this is eleven A then. Review of general fund revenues, pages one through four.
So I think this, so Jeff, your question, you had a question about public charges? Is that what you were asking me?
Well, I mean, if we're going to look at page twenty-five.
No, we're, I'm sorry, we're, we're going to do, uh, general fund revenues, right, Steve?
Yep.
One through four.
Yeah. One through four.
Yeah, just one through four right now.
So just to give you an idea, when I look through the budget, um, the first thing I do is I look at the percent change and I try to understand it.
Mm-hmm.
If it's under five percent, I don't even think about it.
Yep.
If it's, you know, five to fifteen, I give it a quick look, but when I see things that are twenty-five, thirty percent, that catches my eye.
Yeah.
And so when I was looking down that right margin.
Yep.
Um, well, and then one other caveat, if it's fifty percent and the difference is five hundred dollars, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just noticed that the, the sum total on, um, page three, total public charges for services, one hundred and fifty-three percent changed, which was about sixty thousand dollars. So I started to try to go back, but there's so many swings up and down that I really, really wasn't able to identify any one thing. So I thought maybe if I just pointed that out, you could sort of give me the highlights.
It's like the treasurer's fee, we increased a little bit.
Yeah.
Thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
What is the treasurer's fee? Oh, I thought we put that in there as a note.
Hmm.
The treasurer's fee, that's the, um, uh, like if we bill out to, for Stafford's time or for Rukert Milkie's time or for Vandewall's time to developer, there's an extra ten percent charge on that. So it's the ten percent charge. It's like an admin fee to cover our time. For, for, um, actually, because we act kind of as a pass-through then, so we, there's work that we have to do in order to charge them so that they pay us, reimburse us for the fees, that they, the developers. It's mostly for developers.
And, and actually it ties into Jeff's question. Jeff, you know what, what it is? It's because the planner is going to be here next year and we're charging back his or her time. And that's the sixty-eight thousand dollars you see. So that's, that, the goal is, the planner's costing us so much and we're trying to offset that with developer fees. So versus using Vandewall, we're going to, we're going to be charging the, for the planner's time.
So you're saying we're going to be using Vandewall less than?
A lot less, yes.
Thank you. I knew you could do it.
Yeah. You, I was stumped there for a second. I couldn't figure it out.
I hadn't gotten to that line yet. I didn't get to that line.
Yeah.
So Mike, can I ask, this is, because I'm new.
Absolutely.
The, on, on the top of the headings, I know this, it says current year budget, current year actual and projected actual. I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, but that projected actual is sometimes different than the actual because we don't always have everything in, correct?
So we, we try our best to, to, you know, like, we look at this and we're doing this at seven and eight and nine months. And we're, we say, you know, at the end of eighteen, what will that projection be?
Right.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yep, you got it. Yep. And typically, if I, if I've changed something that a department head has submitted, uh, you'll see, like, there'll be a, be a number in the department head column, but then under the administration, uh, budget line item, it'll be different. But I didn't really actually end up changing that much this year. Yeah. Went a little bit in the police department.
Mike or Lisa, a question? And, uh, we, we did, this was tossed around a bit at the joint meeting-
Mm-hmm.
-with the towns. Um, has the village of Brooklyn or the city of Pittsburgh solidified any, their contribution yet?
I don't, I don't think so. Has, has Brooklyn or Pittsburgh ma- made a decision on their funding for this senior center?
Um, I think Brooklyn or the town of Dunn has posted Pittsburgh.
Well, Pittsburgh has that thousand dollars.
So you got, you got Brooklyn?
It says Brooklyn right here is fifteen thousand.
Yeah, we're, we're assuming that, we're assuming the money's coming in from all three entities.
Well, very good.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yep.
But it's not official yet. That's what you're asking about.
It's not official, yeah.
They don't have it, is what that means. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Any further, oops, question, Mike?
No, I see. Is there any questions on page one? Uh, we actually went through some of these already, the recycling grant and the senior center grant and, and then on, on page, um, you know, on page, uh, so let me ask on the bottom, page one. Yeah, sorry, on about on page one, tho- those are our building permits that we, we collect and they go, you know, electric permits, plumbing permits and, you know, obviously the busier we are, the more revenue we collect and then we, we share that with our, our inspector, SafeBuild. I mentioned about the planner's time. Um, uh, on page three, uh, as you, some of you may recall, we have not, we've now updated the twenty-thirteen administrative agreement we have with the fire district, which is why that line item is going up a little bit, uh, for next year. Uh, we have the, we have a, a charge that we, we, a fee we charge the school district for our, we share that with them on having a police officer in the schools. We talked about the, uh, investment income. And, um, I think that's sort of the, the highlights of the revenue. Are there any questions regarding that?
Do we have a place for the city planner to be? Like an office or a desk or, okay.
Yep. We do.
Excellent.
Are there any questions on revenues?
Doesn't look like it right now.
Page twenty-five, right, Steve?
Yeah. You ready to go down to that now?
Yeah, and, and this is, this is the, our payment, uh, to the chamber for all the things they do for the village, which is a lot. And this is what we, we fund the chamber out of this and we help pay for the community again and so forth.
Yeah, if we're talking about the chamber, I just, um, I just have to say how lucky we are to have Judy, uh, as the executive director here and to have the strong chamber that we do have. And there's a lot of projects that are going on in the community right now that either wouldn't have happened at all or were nudged along by Judy. Um, and I've worked in communities where that's not the case and, Mac, this hasn't always been a community where that's been the case, so. Um, so my hat's off to Judy and then also to the village staff. You know, in my time on the board, you have intentionally embraced the chamber. The chambers embrace the village departments and really built a strong working relationship, which I think has benefited the community greatly, so.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, you're right, Jeff. It hasn't always gone this well. But Judy's given great leaderships. She's a team player and it's worked out really well. Okay.
Is there, I'm noticing on that, we're looking at page twenty-five, right?
That's correct.
Not twenty-five A?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Um, there, I mean, there are some big number increases there. I kind of do what Jeff does and I look at the percent increase uh, for, like, the planning and, and is that income like fundraising for JCPark or what?
So the, so, we're not talking about the planning budget right now, but I can-
Oh, okay.
That's okay. I'll tell you, again, that's the planner, that's the, that's the staff planner being added to the budget.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we're just talking about this point.
Just the gen, those two lines near the bottom.
It says, well, actually, we're looking at, it says economic development. It says operating supplies. That, that's, that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay. Well, yeah, well, okay, so it's conservation and development that-
Yes.
What, I mean, that's like a big jump too. What's, uh?
No, we're, well, again, that's because of the planner being added to the, so we're-
Okay.
Forget about that, forget about that. Just look at the eight thousand dollars for the chamber. That's all we're talking about.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep. But that, that number's going up because of the planner in that area.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking, looking at the line that says economic development.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'm gonna read that item eleven B, a discussion possible approval of economic development fund in chamber commerce's twenty nineteen budget, and again, it's page twenty-five, so we need a motion, please?
I'll move, Randy moved it. I'll second it.
Okay, so, now we're legitimate.
Yeah, we're just talking about the chamber funding, that's all. And we'll talk about the, the plan and all that at some point.
Did you wanna make any comments, Judy? I knew she couldn't pass that on.
I'm only asking, I'm not judging.
Well, welcome Judy.
I like Amanda's idea that it should go up severely. So Amanda, keep talking, keep talking.
We've already made the motion, Judy.
And I appreciate the money and I appreciate being here at the, at the village hall, cause we have had other offers and this is just so much easier and, and you know, Mike can tell me to get out and Lisa can tell me to sneak out, so it all works out well and I work very well with the village staff, so, thank you for letting us be here.
It's our pleasure, yeah.
Thank you.
I see the fireworks are budgeted?
If we get the insurance, yes.
Okay, and then the community guide, will fifteen hundred cover the whole guide?
No, but we make, with the fireworks, we make it work.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know, I'm still getting room tax too. Oh, did I say that?
Okay, so any other discussion or comments on this item for the chamber? So we have a motion second to approve the economic development fund and chamber commerce's twenty nineteen budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. So, next is cable TV. Do you, are more people coming, Tom, or? Okay, if you're, oh yeah, Paul's hiding back there too, he just woke up, I think. So, yeah. So we'll go a bit ahead of us, as long as everybody's here, this is gonna be. So, our next item twelve is joint meeting with cable TV committee. The first thing is called order, which
We probably don't have a-
won't happen because there's not a quorum.
Yeah.
So then it goes to item A, discussion possible approval, approval by village board of the twenty nineteen cable TV budget. It's pages thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-four A, and thirty-four B. So, let's start with a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, so now we're on the table. So go ahead gentlemen and welcome.
Thank you. We're very pleased to be here this evening with your packet of materials you did receive, I believe, the two thousand and eighteen program report. I won't, I won't have Paul read that to you in, in the interest of, of time. But I, I think a quick look at that would really identify the commitment that we have to doing professional, high-grade, high-level video work for the Oregon community. We're very proud of what we do. We did a lot of programs, I think it was two hundred and seventy-five programs that we produced and delivered this year. Another element of this is the technology that we're using. We're constantly expanding and improving our technology to the point now that, that we're streaming live programs, not just on our cable channels, but also on YouTube. People can watch anytime, anywhere. They don't have to be a cable subscriber to be able to have live, live programs and watching us right now.
Right now.
Right now. We really appreciate the support that we have from the, the village and it's been a great year. In the packet of materials, you also received our proposal for the two thousand seventeen, or two thousand and nineteen budget. It is for same funding level as we had in prior years. We're not asking for any increase in the funding level. I would draw your attention to a couple of line items in it. There was a substant, there is a substantial increase in the salaries line. That increase is due primarily to our desire to compensate Paul for the actual hours he puts in. We're actually taking him from twenty-five hours to thirty hours and that's the biggest portion of that. There's also a portion of that that would be allocated to budget.
Tom, I'm certain you're, no, now, now there's a quorum of the committee, so probably, you probably wanna,
Oh, okay.
You already just walked in, so.
And I'm on the floor.
Oh, so, yeah, yes.
We have five.
Okay.
So there's a quorum.
So,
You wanna call your meeting director?
Of the village TV committee, thank you, I didn't,
Scat around the room.
You're right, I sneak in, okay, thank you. So, this is an official meeting of the T- village TV subcommittee.
Okay.
Going back to then to the line item on salaries, there's also within that, in addition to the additional hours for the executive director, we're also including a, we're budgetary allowance for salary increases for our paid permanent, permanent part-time staff. They have not had a salary adjustment in over three years and we just think that we need to make some budgetary allowances and as we complete employee reviews, we have funds available to do that. One other provision on that, that I would point out was last year, we allocated five thousand dollars, which was held in a reserve account. We're asking, we're not asking for anything like that to be reserved this year. And actually, we're asking for that five thousand dollars to be dispersed to us as part of our, our funds. What we find is it just doesn't work, that, that expensing and your, your expensing and then reserving those funds doesn't really work with our timing. What we find is a lot of those things that the, that, that funds were allocated for come up on a project basis. So we're getting ready for a broadcast to a football game or, or an event and we suddenly realize we need a new telecaster. Or, we bought, we're coming up, we were coming up and we were just realized that our switcher wasn't gonna work for the next program, it was a twenty-five hundred dollar expenditure that we went ahead and we purchased, probably would have come through that process and asked for those funds. So, it just doesn't really work from a timing perspective. We, I, I think it was a good idea. I think we still are committed to building our capital and, and having, being a strong business organization. But those are the principal points I would make out in relationship to the budget.
Okay. Any comments from staff?
That's-
Questions, comments over here?
My, my only comment is I just wanna thank Paul for his leadership at OCA and I wanna thank Tom for his leadership, taking on president of the board. I really see OCA, or the cable TV subcommittee, however we're referencing ourselves, going to a whole nother level than when I started five years ago. And I think it's in the best interest of the village and, and the best interest of the village residents, specifically I think about the impact it's had on the schools. And I, and I think back to Paul's article in The Observer and how well that captured one grandparent's appreciation for the work that's done. And so for every one of those, I'd like to think there's probably twenty-five other ones that don't get mailed in, but.
I was gonna say the same thing Jeff, and thanks to Paul for your leadership every time something happens and Paul's there taking care of it, things are covered very well, there's, that's real good productions and Tom does a good job of leadership behind the scenes and we appreciate that. It's made it function well and as Jeff said, it's gone to another level and that is appreciated. Wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, that is our desire, is to continue.
I know. Okay, so are there any questions or comments on the cable TV budget?
My only question for Mike, do you have any idea where we're at right now with regard to the franchise fees and, and how this is gonna impact that balance?
Well, we, we collect and then, so we're basically using what we've collected in, in this year, so we're, we're fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? So we have a motion second to approve the cable TV budget for twenty nineteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, you're all set. So then we need an adjournment of cable TV committee?
Call for, we'll adjourn the TV, the TV subcommittee, thank you very much.
Thanks Uriah for showing up.
Thank you.
So who moved that?
Tom moved, I'll second, is there any, be a second or another?
Do you need a motion on it?
There's a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion, cause you got a quorum, yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion.
I have a mo- motion and a, I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now you're official. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, Uriah.
You got your name on the record.
For, to, to, from the village board, Amanda Peters and Jeff.
Okay, chief, are you ready for the fire EMS budget? Okay, I didn't know if we're coming or not, we're ahead, so. We have been, yeah, don't slow us down.
We're not going to, by no means.
Okay, so item sixteen is fire EMS budgets, discussion and possible approval. The village is sixty-four point zero-nine percent of the fire EMS budget. The items we have are A, fire protection, page fourteen, EMS page fourteen, and budget allocation sheet and capital improvement plan, pages fourteen A and fourteen B. So, chief, you are on and welcome.
Thank you for having me, Steve, and board. This is just kinda, I think, a follow-up from basically the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Over at the, the center there, we had the question and answer and all that kinda stuff, so I believe that Lisa took the numbers from off these preliminary sheets, put them in their appropriate categories and so on and so forth, but otherwise, nothing is, really has changed since we've talked a week or so ago over there at the fire and EMS budget meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. So we need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll, oh, good. I'll second it.
Thank you. So, any questions or comments? I know we had a discussion, as, as chief said earlier.
Yo, my only comment is again, I just, I'm really grateful to have chief on board. The staff has embraced chief's leadership. I think the esprit in that fire department is higher than I've ever seen it. And I measure that by the number of firefighters and EMS personnel that will come to our meetings. There's very frequently four, five, or six, perhaps even all the staff, attending those meetings, cause they're taking an interest in what we're doing at the fire, in EMS station. I've been there long enough to have heard how bad things were and to have seen how good things got and chief has again, just taken the fire EMS services to a whole nother level and my confidence in him couldn't be any higher.
Yeah, thanks Jeff, and, and I certainly agree with that, I guess everybody does, we appreciate that, chief. And, and, what, going back five or six years, Mike? This was a tough budget to go through.
Twenty-eleven.
It was a mess.
Twenty-eleven, yeah.
So we didn't even know what we didn't know back then. We, we didn't know the, the state of equipment, the state of hoses and and chief has turned all of that around, given us depreciation schedules, and now we do know, looking out five years, what kind of expenses we're gonna be expecting. Just helps us to plan and prepare.
Yeah, and the budget itself was way out of whack, revenues and expenditures, so that's gotten in line, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then, chief, I'll just say, thank you for the one-on-one tour.
Anytime, we like to have one-on-one tours. I know we've offered some ride-alongs, some of you have taken us up on those ride-alongs. You get a whole different perspective when you ride along with that fire and EMS operation and it's only four and a half calls a day that we get over there and growing with the district, but it's never-ending and pretty much lively all the time. Right Jenna?
Yep, I went on a ride-along yesterday. It was pretty amazing to see what the crew did during the day and learn, just experienced their day and totally got a picture in one of the hats, so.
Exactly. No, we greatly appreciate the village and everything you do for us and the support and all that kinda stuff and going back to what Jeff says. You know, I can't do this alone, but it's, it's definitely a team, it's our, our paid staff and then of course, all of our paid on-call, our paid on-premise folks that come in from the outside. But some of the things that are just some of the, the benefits that I've seen in the last couple of years of being here, it was for a while there, we, it was very light on our response where we had multi-units going out to something. Now we've been running, knock on wood, here the last week or so when we had multiple incidents going or multiple lightning strikes at the same time, we've been pulling three, four, or five vehicles out of that building at four o'clock in the morning. So, that, that's really nice to see, because we're only staffing for basically two and the rest of the folks are people that are living in the fire district, coming in and making that happen, so. Can't do it alone, so it's definitely working and, and everybody does see the support from yourself and from our township partners.
Yeah, so I did a ride-along too a few years ago, I was only in the back of an ambulance. The former student with the I.D. needle, and I'm thinking, I hope I treated this guy okay. It was Tony Atene, was fine.
Yeah.
I think he was more nervous than I was.
You took the ride-along the hard way?
Yeah, yeah. I was fine, so it turned out, but.
Very good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So you were fine?
More or less. That was a long time ago, actually. So we had the motion, we had the motion second to approve the fire EMS budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, you're all set. Keep up the work.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to the senior center budget. So let's, I guess, start with the motion, I'll read the items off. Motion for senior center budget, please.
I'll move that, since I'm the most senior.
I'll second.
Thank you. So what we're gonna be looking at with director Rachel Brickner is a review of twenty nineteen goals and allocation sheet, the meal site, outreach, adult day programs, senior center, senior center building, and senior center donations. So, you are on, Rachel.
Okay, well, most of this is the same stuff you were looking at several weeks ago, just like the fire EMS budget, you've seen this before. So I'm not gonna drag you through it in great detail. I am going to just publicly thank Dane County for its continued commitment to human services and its continued support of seniors in the county. If it weren't for that commitment, we wouldn't be seeing the increase in funding that we have seen, or we expect to see next year from the county. And I, thank you also, on behalf of the seniors in the community, to the board, because your commitment as well has not wavered to supporting the seniors in the community and it is very appreciated. So, the budget is, is pretty much what you saw before? I don't know, Lisa, we, you really changed anything in the budget?
Not really, it's pretty much the same.
Right, so you can see on page twenty-B, the relative costs of the different programs and the how much of each is municipally funded. You can also see what portion of the budget each of the supporting municipalities is picking up and how that compares to the twenty eighteen budget. And if you've got questions about particular items, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Are there questions? As Rachel said, we went through this a couple of weeks ago in the joint meeting. So we have looked at it in detail one time.
Yeah, I think I asked all my questions that night, so I.
You must have.
Okay, we're even now.
That was the plan.
I think, I, I just like to say that we, you know, we have some relatively new department heads and while all their predecessors did a really great job, I think all of our new department heads are really breathing in new life into their programs. I've done a couple of programs for Rachel at the senior center in the last couple of months and she has so many people over there involved. She and Anna are doing such a great job. The seniors are so happy with your leadership.
Thank you.
She's just, she's got a happy crew over there and that's nice to see.
Yeah, thanks, that's a great comment. We all agree with that, Rachel.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on the senior center budget? Okay, so we have the senior center budget. We have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It was, it was Balik and Jenna.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was easy enough, thanks Rachel. We'll go to item eighteen, the clerks budget. We have discussion possible approval for the clerk budget and elections, so a motion, please.
So moved.
I'll sit.
Thank you. Any comments here from staff?
So, in, in this one, basically, we're, we're switching money around between elections in the clerks budget because we, we have only, what, two elections next year? I mean, so like, yeah, two, that's the annual idea. So that's, that's why you're seeing, seeing the swing in the, in both those budgets. And then again, this is where the, this is, the vacant position has now been fully funded for the year, which is a, another reason why they increased, so.
Okay.
You know, I just feel like I, I need to, again, acknowledge the work of the village. The fact that village staff has been short has been largely gone on, largely unnoticed, right? I mean, that, and that's just a testimony to how well you all work together. Nobody's been complaining, nobody's been griping, people have been pulling extra weight, just making it happen. And I'm so appreciative of that, because again, I've seen situations where it doesn't go that way. People hunker down and they play the game of not my responsibility and you're not paying me enough and we haven't seen any of that. So to Candy and Peggy and the rest of the staff, you know, thank you very much for the hard work that you put in.
Thanks Jeff, we agree.
And I, and I did thank Peggy, I thought she did a really nice job of outlining her accomplishments and then the things she wants to do in eighteen and, and do in nineteen, so. I agree with all of them, if she gets it done, that'd be great, that'd be a great year.
Great, mhm.
I, I do wanna note one thing that she has in there that we're gonna, we're gonna finally start dealing with the municipal code, we're doing chapters one and two. And that's why when we talk about the legal budget, well, I'll talk about that for a few minutes, but we, we really do need to start updating the code, it's, it's in, it's in shape, so that we need to do it.
Is it still legal to spit on the sidewalk?
That's still in there, yes. But that's in chapter three, so we won't, we won't be changing that, Jeff.
Any question or comments on the clerk budget? So we have a motion second to approve the clerk budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen, the administrative section, we'll take this a section at a time, then get a motion at the end. So, item A, village board, pages four and four A.
I wanted, I wanted the board to see the, the letter we received from the league. I know sometimes people ask me about, I think it's mainly Jerry, to be honest. Ask me, why, why do we belong to the league and, so, not to pick on Jerry.
Why are we paying this money? That's what my question is.
I, I think Lisa would agree with me that the league does a great job for us, just lobbying for us, I mean, we would be, without the league, we'd be getting just killed at the, at the state cap.
Yeah.
I mean Kurt does a great job and, you know, I, I mean- I mean, Kurt does a great job, and, you know, I mean, some of you know that Matt's wife is Claire, who is the league's lead counsel, and so we end up talking to her quite a bit, Matt, I'll call Matt, and Matt will actually just call her, and we'll get her on the phone, so I mean, we get our money's worth plus from the league, so I have no problem recommending we do this.
Yeah.
Very good.
Not to mention the great trainings for new board members, that was really helpful to me, and they do a lot of seminars and all kinds of interesting things to help people on boards, not just the municipality people.
And their website has a ton of great information, if you're ever interested in nerding out a little bit.
Anything else in this item? Item B, municipal court.
That's the budget for best.
Any questions here?
No.
We'll go to item C, legal, Mike?
Sorry, I mentioned both these already, why the, you know, it's going up because things are going to trial, and also, like I said, we're gonna be doing the chapters one and two of the municipal code, and we're hopefully gonna try to, going back to being fully staffed, Candy and they're gonna try to do, deal with updating the employee handbook, which has been sitting on the sidelines for a while, so.
That's huge. That's huge.
Okay, we'll go to item D, administrator budget, pages five and six.
That's my budget. So my salary, like Jeff's, is spread out throughout the budget, some of my time is charged to the TIDS, and also to the Southeast Business Park, so this is what, I spend my L.K. time for the general fund, that's where my salary gets charged to this account.
Item E, computers, page seven.
This is basically pay for computer magic to, which has been our computer consultant for quite some time.
Questions, comments here?
Are you happy with them?
Mm-hmm, yes. I mean, I think at some point, we will go out and test the market, but at this point, I don't see us doing that in the near future.
Yeah, they seem like they've done a good job.
Yeah.
Mike, I can't get them to respond to me.
Really?
About my email.
Oh. Wait, what, Randy, why don't you?
I can't get into my emails, so I sent them an email.
Are you sending it to the customer service?
Whatever, whatever I was given.
Why don't you send it either to me or Candy, we'll get a response, because if you send it to the customer service, you'll get a response saying they're working on it, and...
Yeah, they'll create a ticket.
Exactly, yeah.
Candy will get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get you your emails.
All right.
We don't want you to miss anything, Randy.
Oh, I need more, I need more, don't I?
And then you'd be calling and going, hey, cut it off. You don't know what the...
Anything else on computers? Okay, we'll go to item F, accounting, pages seven and eight.
This is where we pay the auditor to audit, and the professional services on page eight.
Now, will this be the first year with the new auditor?
No.
Second year.
Second year, yeah.
Well, the 2019 budget will actually be the third year.
Third year, okay. That's, you're happy with the firm?
Johnson Block.
Any questions, comments here? Okay, item G, assessor, page eight.
As we, as we said notes in here, this is the last year of the contracts, we'll have to go out, get a proposal from them.
Item H, other general government, pages nine, nine-A, and ten.
So this is the fund where, these are items that encompass the entire village, and so we, rather than giving it into the department, we fund it through this fund, and this is where we have our employee assistant program, and I actually put in there, I get a quarterly report from our service, it's very confidential, one thing that Greg Chisholm provides is the number of people that he sees, that's it, obviously never any name or any information, and every other year, he comes out and does harassment training, and then he, at that time, you know, promotes the program, so we pay for that through this fund, we pay our safety consultant through this fund, and this is also where we have our contingency amount, which is actually a little bit, a little bit higher this, at this point, that may be something that we may lower, but we, at this point, we're keeping it a little bit higher at this point, we still haven't gotten some of our insurance numbers, and so we may end up lowering this and moving some money around in the general fund.
Okay. Any questions or comments here on general government? But item I, insurance, page ten.
Right now, we just took the eighteen numbers and put in nineteen, because we haven't received the amount, so we'll update that as soon as we get them.
Item J, planners, pages twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five-A.
So this is what we've been talking about, this is the budget for the staff planner, and we still are including some money for the used Van De Wall as well, there'll be projects, we'll need Mike Slavny's help, so we're doing both.
Any questions here? We will go to item K, general fund transfer to other funds, page twenty-five.
So Lisa, you wanna do this one?
This is just, we've been doing this a number of years, a transfer for the purchase of the Demagio property. When we originally bought the property, the village, well, the general fund was contributing a little over eighty-three hundred dollars for five years, and that ended, and we were hoping that the park fund was gonna donate money towards it, and what we ended up doing with the forty thousand that we won at the park fund, because it basically is a park, this property that's behind the old Florida Avenue areas where this is, so we split that with the park fund, so now we're doing an additional twenty thousand dollars for the next five years to pay down the loan that we had, or to pay off the advance that we had to buy the Demagio property back in two thousand thirteen, would it have been? Two thousand thirteen.
Something like that, yeah.
Thanks, Lisa, any questions or comments here?
So that money, that money's going into four-twenty-three, which we'll talk about that on next Monday.
So any questions or comments on any item A through K?
I have, I have one. So the staff planner that we're looking to hire, is that like, just like an independent, you know, we're just gonna put out for the job, or is this someone that we're getting from, like Van De Wall and associates?
They will be a department head of the village, and staff, employee of the village.
So we'd put, we'd hire from...
We'll do, we'll do a job search.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. It's, okay.
Yeah, just like hiring a department head, like we did the...
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure, because I didn't know if they, you know, we were kinda getting somebody from Van De Wall or something who knew our history, sort of, and like our planning, I know, it just seemed like, like I didn't, like whoever does our planning now, I didn't know if that was something that they were, like, we're renting someone from them, or, no, we're hiring a...
We actually thought of, we thought of doing that at one point, but I think we're at the point where we need to have somebody here full-time, well, actually more than full-time working on projects, and that's why we have so many in the budget to continue to use Mike Slavny throughout nineteen, I think we're gonna have to reach out to him more than a few times, he's been working here almost twenty years as our planner, knows a lot of the history of the village.
Okay, yeah, that's why I was...
I'm trying to talk him into retiring from Van De Wall.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I was saying that too.
He's not, he's not there yet.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I think he would work here, but I just don't think he's there professionally yet, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions, items A through K? So any motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item twenty, recreation program, including youth centers, 2019 budget, pages twenty-four and twenty-four-A, this includes payment the school district for running the summer rec program, and the village's continued support for the youth center. So we need a motion, please? Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments here?
There's, there's a letter from the youth center requesting the money in the packet.
I just wanna thank Diane Newman again, you know, I remember back when the YMCA cut funding for the program, and the program was in jeopardy, and Diane rolled up her sleeves and said, no, I'm committed to Oregon, and I'm gonna make this work, and she built a board, formed a five-oh-one-C-three, kept negotiating with the village, and made it work, and helped us to sustain a vital program in the village of Oregon.
Yeah, she's been very loyal.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have her.
The heart of a senior center, my experience is always the director, and she's been the heart of it, and she's great.
Yeah.
And we should see some equipment over any day it stops raining.
So that's, this might be a good time, Randy, being that you're the chair of Oregon Community Resource Network, can you give us an update on the construction, I know that it didn't go as quickly as we thought?
Well, you're right, we encountered soil issues, worse than what we thought. We have come up with a solution, I am happy to tell you that we just, on Friday, got a, somebody from the community gave us an extra thirty thousand dollars to help with those issues. We even got a five thousand dollar check from a couple, one of our board members knew, in California, knew the situation and sent the five thousand dollar check. So we also discovered there were some utility issues on the property that nobody knew about, that we had to deal with, with Alliant, and Dan Bertler is great to work with, anybody can come up with a solution, it's Dan. So we should see some equipment, I think we're still hopeful, it's, everything is gonna go on schedule, there may be a change with the current youth center, may have to move here shortly, because otherwise, we're gonna be delayed on some of the work until next June with the asphalt, the asphalt is kinda holding us up, and there's a certain period of time when you have to get that asphalt down, we're trying to get it down this year, otherwise, we have to wait till next June, so. So I think we have things resolved, we've been working with Mike and Jeff, and as I said, Dan has been great to work with, and I think we've got things resolved, so we should see some digging, finally.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Just as a side note, my son is finally of age to be able to use the youth center, and he went once with a friend of his, and now he goes pretty often, a couple times a week, he's over there, and he really likes it, and that's the old one. He's always just imagining, he's gonna love it, so, I appreciate that resource.
Thanks, Randy.
Anything else on youth center or summer rec? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the part of the budget on the summer rec program with the school district, and our support for the youth center, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item twenty-one, discussion possible approval of general debt service fund, three-oh-seven, pages sixty-two and sixty-three, this is debt service for police and public works buildings in September twenty eighteen, which means the village stopped collecting impact fees for these buildings, so. Mike, you wanna take us through this?
This is the general debt service, and Jerry, you saw we changed the title?
I didn't, I appreciate that.
It used to be called post-two-thousand-five debt, I'm not even explaining why we did that, it doesn't matter anymore, so we now, this is our general debt service, and this is what I was saying before, is when you look back, at the very top line, the general property tax back to actual in seventeen, and what it is now in nineteen, it's, you know, we're taking debt out, and it's, so it's hitting the levy, and it's one of the things of growing, we're doing projects, for example, I know people are very, very excited about Perry Parkway extension, well, now we're paying for it, so, it's part of, part of the community.
Well, anytime I think about paying off a debt on a capital improvement, like the police department, I start to think about, so then what's next? You know, and it's gonna, it's not gonna be that far out, and we're gonna be looking, I think we're gonna have to look at a police substation and additional fire station...
Absolutely.
To house a ladder truck as our...
And public works at some point, yeah, yeah.
So, these are nice waypoints to take a breath and be proud of the things that we've done, and then also to start thinking forward.
I agree.
Okay, so we need a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we have the motion second on fund three-oh-seven, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item twenty-two, confirming items for upcoming budget meetings, October fifteenth and seventeenth, and November twelfth will be our next meetings on this. Item twenty-three, discussion possible action on twenty-eighteen budget amendment number one, which is the recommended motion.
No problem.
Sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
So these are, these items are right behind the agenda in the first tab, if you're looking for them.
So, tell me about the budget amendment, Mike, is this a truing up of the budget prior to the end of the fiscal year?
Lisa?
It's a secret.
I'd like to hear it now, instead of at the audit.
This is, this is for some of the things that have been approved throughout the year, that the boards approve, like for the feasibility study, the extra money that we're putting into that, there is a budget amendment in there for the capital purchases that we did for the fire district, and then, let's see, cover time. Oh, and then some of this is from the closing of TIF two, some of the funds where they were allocated to go, so we've allocated them into those other funds now.
Yeah, so I'm always curious about this, you know, we go through this process of approving the budget this time of the year, and then, and then we go through the year, but we don't ever really follow up to see how our spending is coming into budgeted line items, for good reason, right, because that would be every meeting between now and the end of the year, being that the budget's three inches thick. But on some of the other committees that I'm on, it's important for us prior to the end of the fiscal year to true up the budget, we can't be over budget in certain categories, and then way other, way under in others.
Correct.
So we bring in monies to the categories that are short from categories that are over, so that in the end, we're within a reasonable tolerance of the approved budget. Is this related to that, or no?
This particular, not really, that one's usually done at the end of the year, and the thing that swings the most in there is probably the public works, because we budget what we think's gonna happen during the year, but depending on what actually happens, expenses could end up in different line items, so that's usually the one that requires the most amending at the end of the year, and that usually isn't done until the end of the year is over.
Right.
And then it's trued up, kind of, usually like in January, February, kinda through the budget process, or the audit.
And so through that process, we guarantee the residents that the budget is, lands as it was budgeted at the beginning of the year, without pulling monies from other sources.
Right, we still budget for zero, and expenses are just allocated from the different categories, there's like the general operating, and then there's like public safety, and the different conservation and economic development, you know, some of those areas, so if we've underspent in some of those, what we've overspent in some of the other ones, we have to do budget amendments, because when the auditors go through, they look at those rolled up areas, and if you're over budget, they need explanations for that, so if you're under budget or a little bit of a surplus in those areas, that's what they like to see.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, department heads are looking every month, right? Make sure you report on where they are, it's like when halfway through the year, looking, are we around fifty percent of expenditures, if not, what's going on, so that happens on a regular basis throughout the year.
Yeah, and I know that the board is supposed to get quarterly reports, but I think we've only gotten one quarter out, just, we've been short-staffed, and we've been behind with the transition of people doing certain duties, and I'm pretty sure you haven't seen June yet.
We saw that, like midway through the year, didn't we?
Did we do the June one?
We did a midway, yeah, we did the June one.
Oh, okay, good, we're not as far behind as I thought, then.
Yeah, you're, you're okay.
So you should be seeing one maybe by the end of the month in one of our meetings, then, through the end of September.
Thank you.
Can I ask, go back to the youth center, I'm sorry, you just caught us.
Sure.
So, in reading Diane Newman's letter, she requested sixteen thousand dollars, similar to twenty-eighteen, and when I look at the budget, it says the department head budget was twenty-one eleven eleven, or twenty-one thousand one hundred, eleven thousand one hundred for the summer rec program, and then ten thousand for the youth center.
Yeah, so I, so I didn't really make a big deal about it, because they're moving out of the building, we would give them six, six thousand dollars of rent free, so it was a sixteen thousand dollar request, it's ten thousand in cash, and it's six thousand of writing off the rent.
Right.
So that's what, that's what she's asking for, sixteen thousand, but they're gonna be out of their building, it doesn't matter. And they're gonna, and actually, when we talk about the village hall budget, you'll see that, a note that we actually took a thousand dollars out of the budget next year for the maintenance of the youth center, because we're not gonna own the building next year. Sorry, I should've explained that.
Anything else? So we have the motion and second for a budget amendment, number one, from the twenty-eighteen budget, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item twenty-four, discussion possible action regarding resolution number thirteen-eighteen dash thirty-eight, levying special assessments. Resolution Number 18-38 Leaving Special Assessments Against Benefit of Property. There's a note from the Village Attorney. The special assessment resolution levies special assessments against developable lots in the Highlands of Netherwood to help pay the cost of future improvements to Netherwood Road and Jefferson Street. The developer and the village agreed to use a special assessment approach to recover those funds. So the recommended motion is to approve Resolution Number 18-38 Leaving Special Assessments Against Benefit of Property.
I'll second. Or is this being brought to us to where it needs a first, or is this...
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
It's just, it's a resolution, so there's no first or second readings.
Yeah.
And this is, we're having to do this, so the plat now has been recorded for Highlands and Netherwood. And I know you're not going to remember this, but they're in the development agreement, this is what we decided to do, to collect our share, or I'm sorry, their share of the Netherwood and Jefferson Street contribution. We're going to special assess each of the lots out there.
Where's this located exactly?
It's forward development. This is next to, you know where Beehive's is?
Yes.
To the west of that.
Thank you.
Between Netherwood and Jefferson.
So, Mike, just, so, somebody buys a lot?
Yep.
They're going to buy the lot, plus they're going to get an assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I mean, what used to happen, most likely, was the developer...
They just add it on to the cost of law.
Developers are having a hard time getting that upfront money now, like they used to in the, like, before the recession. This was all paid upfront, but they're not doing it anymore. Well, we collected some money upfront from them. We collected Stormwater and the Interceptor, but we negotiated this. The village will get its money, so I'm comfortable with it. And Matt was too, so.
Okay. Any other questions on this resolution? We have a motion to second for Resolution Number 18-38. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 25, October 4th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Trustee Carpenter, please.
Yeah, so we'll do these one at a time, but they're all pretty much the same thing. So the first one is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Certified Survey Map CSM for Bergamot Lot 302. So I would make a motion that we approve that CSM.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The second one is having to make a motion that we approve the certified survey map for Bergamot Lot 357.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item C.
This is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Certified CSM for Bergamot Lot 1 Leeward. So I would make a motion that we approve the certified survey map for Bergamot Lot 1 Leeward contingent on removing the wording from quote, "or Brinhale Drive."
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'm going to abstain from that.
Yeah, Randy's going to abstain.
Okay.
I thought that was familiar.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Is that your lot?
That's my lot.
Okay, item 26, Communication Miscellaneous Business. We have approval pending new operator licenses, recommended approval by the Police Department. Quick Trip 302, Rebecca C. Mills and Lisa M. Skolaski. Quick Trip 372, Bryant M. Hacker. And Headquarters, Kayla N. Catlin.
So move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion for adjournment, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. That's a record for a budget meeting.